I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on this very excited to introduce our downtown Burnsville Design Committee members who have put a lot of time into this and Lisa, who is their chair, and the whole group have done an amazing job. And then Tom and I met and saw the long presentation. We think Al and Gina and I then had a shorter presentation and I am just so excited about this project and thank you for putting the work into get it moving. And after the ghost tour and you know how much history we all learned, this is really exciting. So I will turn it over to you and take it away.
Yes, well, where do we do this now? Okay, hi, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've typically been here, so it's kind of nice to be back a little bit, but I just wanted to kick off this presentation by first of all, saying thank you for listening to us tonight and one of the times that you've heard, those of you who have heard it a few times. Just as a quick reminder, I know a lot of you already are well versed in this, but the Main Street program has multiple facets and as an official Main Street community now, for us, those facets are design committee promotions, economic vitality, while also managing the organizational side of things. Saturday night, you would have experienced if you were in attendance with the hundred history tours, you experienced the promotions committee will be doing and has been doing up until this point. But it is right up in line with what our design committee has been working on. So just so everyone is aware, for the record, this is a downtown Burnsville committee and we all have separate committees. We all do come together and work together as much as we possibly can on various projects, including this one. So I am very, very, very happy to announce I have a team of people that are doing an incredible job on this project and I will pass it now over to our Chair, Lisa Diaz, who's been doing phenomenal work, leading the charge. So.
Thank you, Olivia. Thank you, council members, for giving us some time on the floor this week. We are here to present this wonderful project to you that we've been working on so diligently for almost a year now. All a team of volunteers and we are seeking your concept approval for this program to determine whether we should move forward to implement and what it is, is it is a self-guided historical tour of downtown Burnsville Main Street area. Can we have that first slide please? And would you mind distributing the handouts? So I have a set of handouts for you so that you can just have a quick reference guide at your fingertips as a takeaway after this meeting over, just the key highlights in it. Anthony, bring nothing, the slide. And before we get too far into it, I just want to tell the council that they're not asking us for money.
I think we mentioned that at one point.
Mary Jean, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Is there a way to make that full screen by chance? If not, that's okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So this is just introducing the program. Why don't you go to the next slide then please? Is this the right, is this the PowerPoint? No, no, go back one. Thank you. So I just wanted to point out the four, the four teams that are part of the downtown Burnsville Main Street committees and how this particular program fulfills the, the needs that satisfy the design committee, which is creating an inclusive atmosphere. If you're taking a historical tour, that's all about stories. And as we learned from last weekend, what's better than a good story to get you excited and feel proud proud about the community that you live in, or if you're visiting, get more excited about wanting to spend more time there. Also to encourage more economic vitality because a program like this will get people excited about coming into town, visiting some of the shops, maybe spending a little more money, getting something to eat in the restaurants. Next slide, please. This does look like it's the other presentation, but that's okay. I can work with this one too. I'll just have you skip a few slides. This particular program is not just a set of historical markers that we have, we will be sharing with you that will be placed in 10 historical sites that we are recommending in the town that represent historical significance to our town. It also involves incorporating some of the live events that we have and also promoting through different types of materials that we can distribute within the different shops and restaurants. Next slide, please. We, we searched very hard for a good set of signs that we felt would attract people's attention, generate interest, and be a little bit more than just a plaque with some words on it. We wanted something that really started to tell a story. So if you take a look at the, this is by a company called Museum in the Streets and that is our recommended vendor. The owner of this company founded this in 1996 and he has entire career of experience in the museum and informal learning industry. And so he knows a lot about sharing interesting information in a way that, that will stay with you. His signs exist already in about 70 towns throughout the U.S. and Europe. So there's a lot of experience behind these signs that we're recommending to you. And I'll show you some actual, a set, an actual sample of a sign in a moment. So you can see what they look like and feel like and see how durable they are and how they will last through the weather. But I'll see the next slide, please. So these are cost and funding sources that, that we have for this program and none of that is coming from borough money or taxpayer dollars. This is all grant funds and then if we need more for anything else, we might look at sponsorships or other grant money, but right now we have the money to fund this project as we're about to describe it to you. This material is also on your handout, so you can reference that. I won't go into a lot of details since we're not asking you for money, but the total for just the signs is about $12,000, includes the shipping and has a 10-year warranty on it. So we've got the next slide, please. Here's an example of what these signs look like in some of the other cities that Museum in the Streets has installed. As you can see, they're very friendly, inviting. They have a nice warm quality to them. Next slide, please. And these are the sites that we are recommending for this tour. The first two columns are sites that are our first choices, but again, we need to ask for permission from property owners, from business owners. We want you to be aware of what we would like to be doing. So then if anyone asks you, what's this project about and why are you spending our money on this? You could say, well, it's not our money. But here we can tell you a little bit about this project. And so these are the, these are the sites that we identify that are our first choice. But if someone says, no, we really don't want to participate and we want to put a marker on their property, we selected a few alternative sites as well that are all in the Main Street area. And then this is just a sample of what the walking tour might look like and where you go. You start at the library, the new library, and we'll have that big central sign there and you will just scan a QR code and you can choose English or Spanish and you can listen to an audio tour as you walk and take the tour on this tour and learn all the stories about these different sites. And there can also be opportunities to speak to some of the sites that are across the street. Maybe there's some nice little tidbit we want to share about something across the street, but we don't want to put a full sign there. We can add that into the audio. Next slide, please. And here's an example of what these signs might look like in front of some of our sites that we've chosen. You might recognize some. One caveat is angling the sign can, can cause us to lose our warranty, our 10-year warranty would only be good for two years. But it does look better and it is more interesting to read that way. These signs are set up with num, with a numbering system on them, but we may not choose to use the numbers because we're thinking that as soon as the signs start getting put up, there might be other, other folks who might say, you know what, we want to be part of this as well. So I want to take this actual sample of a sign and I want to bring this up to you, if I may approach, and give you a chance to just really feel how sturdy, feel how ready that is, how sturdy this sign is. What is it actually made out of? Do you know what the materials? I don't know. I asked Patrick, the owner of the company, and he said it's, it's like a fiber board, but it's made to be weatherproof. And then I can pass this around for you to have a look at and this is a sample of what a sign might be for one of our sites. Just pass that around. And Nando actually prepared that sample for us that we could, we could see what would be like if one of our sites was made into a real sign. Can I see the next slide, please? So here's some examples of how this program all comes together. Here's just the actual sign itself. And here you can see the QR codes. You can scan for English or Spanish. But then here's something else that we're doing that is very unique that I haven't seen in other towns. And that is making this even stickier so that people get interested about this program. Let's say you're, for example, in Ristorante MV and you're upstairs in the trattoria chatting up a bar and maybe Andrew or somebody at the bar. And you see this really cute little table tent right here. And the table tent gets your attention. You say, it says, did you know that in this building in 1912, then New Jersey Governor, it's so different. You get amnesia when you're up in front of them. Woodrow Wilson stayed in this building, which was then called the Old Stone Hotel while he was on the campaign trail with the President. And the next day, as you can see from this side, he came out and delivered a campaign speech. And by the way, you want to know a little bit more about our town and some of the other interesting stories? Why don't you scan this barcode and after your meal is done, take a nice walk and learn a little bit more. We welcome you to join us and maybe while they're on their way, they might stop into a shop or two. Next slide, please.
Would they, is there the opportunity for people who own the property now to also be able to advertise, like have that QR code inside of their restaurant or?
Yeah, that's part of what this is for, so that this, this table. Exactly. And then over here, you can see that this is a still shot of what the website content can have in addition to the text. This is the restaurant MV and you can see this is actually a slider. When you slide back and forth, it goes, it goes one way to reveal the old building or the other way to reveal the new building that as it exists today. Is that for the restaurant, the one that's on the table in the restaurant or the? So this would be the website here and then here would be your audio. And so you can actually look at this if you want to. And if you're not even on the tour, you can see this as well. And then this would be the table tent that would promote that particular site. And then the, the actual markers that would belong at each site. Now, there is one central marker that is larger that has all of the sites listed and a map on it. And that's the one that would be at the library and outside of Borough Hall as well. We can get into, I, I heard there might be a source to buy a, a sign for outside of the borough. But we, we can, we can find it if that's not there, but. All right, next slide, slide please. So that's just an overview of, of what this is. And we wanted to present this to you to see if you would approve the concept, but also see if you have any questions or concerns. It's not intimidating at all to express any concerns. In fact, it really helps us so that our team can prepare better for anything that might come up. You hear the voices of the people all the time. And so we want to know what those concerns might be so we can address them. So your next steps would be reaching out to the property, which is that would the next? Yes, next step would be reach out to the property owners and the business owners to get their buy-in. But first we want to develop some good messaging that's consistent and we would be doing that with the Economic Vitality Committee in partnership with them. And then after that, we would finalize what all the, which all, which sites they are. And then we need to figure out where do these signs go? You saw that we, we checked out different options, but we don't know if, if it's acceptable to place a sign there, if it impedes view of cars coming through. So we picked several places at every site to choose from to start a discussion. And so we'd need to meet with the right people. Maybe you can direct us with who those people might be. In terms of where the sign, the right of way, the. And then if it's the property owner themselves, then we would also be collaborating with them as well to discuss how they can be mounted on their property. If that was the best location for those signs. And then I eventually do begin to also present this to the zoning committee for final approval when we have a lot more information about, well, this, this location will have two posts on it. It'll be angled this way or this is getting mounted on a fence or a wall. When we know those details to see what they, what they have to say about that.
If a property violates their limited sign, what they're committed and how many signs, so there might be, might be, might be logical to go to the planning board, get a courtesy review as a, I guess, as a government project in a way because downtown Burnsville is sort of a quasi-related entity. So we'll have to get some guidance on that. But first thing is get permission and then evaluate each property from a zoning perspective, see if there are any actual issues.
So the first thing, the first step would be to go to the property owners and then we'll talk with Renee. I can do the Renee thing.
Because any, because any zoning permit requires sign off by the property owner.
Do you need a number, a minimum number of property owners? In other words, some might say they just don't want to be involved, need to add a minimum threshold?
We need 10.
Need 10, okay.
Yeah, I love this idea.
I actually have a question. What if the property is borough property? I mean technically we're standing in front of the yarders right now in theory, right? I mean, I don't know that worse. So it would be another request or is?
Do you know of one off the top of your head?
I'm just, I'm just thinking about alternative spaces, you know, because if the borough citizen says, no, we don't want it on the building or really close up or what have you, you know, there's a park across the street. The train station is also another location, which I realize is New Jersey Transit as well, but obviously there's a little up there.
The library?
And have a big sign there and, and start from there.
And very, very supportive. Thanks for the presentation tonight and the other community itself.
Mr. McQueen, there's a handout that either can be sent to you or you can get a physical copy when you're in the office.
Yeah, that's fine. I could see the slides well enough. I, I really applaud the initiative. This is the type of thing that's perfectly in line with, with the borough. And again, if it hasn't been said, I applaud what you guys did, what, last weekend as well with the Halloween ghost tour. Again, you guys are doing great work. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The Old Stone Hotel, was it called that in 1912?
Yes, it was.
What was like the new property? Why did it go to the Old Stone Hotel? Was that on the thing?
You know, that's a good question, but I'm.
There will be a lot of, you know, digital component and enhancement of this, you know, that obviously the markers are a big focal point to get folks to come here, but in this world that we live in now, it's all about digital. So having that capacity to be able to expand on it, to reduce some information, you know, if a business changes, then we'll take a new photo, we'll update information, you know, so it'll allow us the opportunity to continue evolving those historical stories that we may, may not yet know of.
I love the idea of combining having like a table tent, like, you know, why not?
And actually it started with another business comes along. They don't even need a sign. It could also just be on the block. And it's nice that it updated instantly. If anything changes, you know, when we have the little you know, you have to wait for somebody to go in and redo it and then print it. And so this is terrific because we can update it immediately when anything changes.
Is it going to be hosted by downtown Burnsville or will it be on the town site?
It will be, actually it'll be hosted at mainstreetburnsville.org. There will be a newer site to be able to host the large format photos that tend to cloud up websites. So it will be at a relatively new location, but if the links back and forth and wherever they need to be will be available to share across the board.
Yeah, I was just, I was just asking a question about the hosting and current security and something where to get, you know, who owns that process?
Yeah, downtown Burnsville does. You know, we have all those things in place already with the site that we have. Since we get quite a lot of donations and purchases and so forth on our website, we want to make sure that the security aspect is so we have that in place. And then we'll obviously with everything else.
Would you just introduce your committee members that are here? Yes, yes. And you have all of their names on, on the handout. So I'm going to refer to it real quick because some of, some of them are here and some of them are not here. So of course, we've got Steve Moran, who is the business owner, I think. And Hando Zerilla, who is an architect and a realtor as well. And also on our team is Christina Valas, who is Strategic Director, Cole Banker, and Diane Reethel, who you may be familiar with. Ray Foreman, who's a business owner in town. He has a practical practice here.
I'm actually on the interweb, so. I'm stalking everybody tonight.
Ken Malian, who's also, who's a business partner with Steve and Meryl Massey, who's a food technologist and a chemist. And Bob Richardson, who's an architect and a realtor. And that's our team and they've been all working very, very hard to make this happen, collecting. Oh yeah, I'm, I'm on this too.
For residents who are watching and want to provide exactly what should they do, email you directly or us?
I think reaching out to us is probably going to be easier because you guys, obviously everything's full of lots of things going on. And since we're the leads on this, we're happy to take questions or provide more information. Or if anybody wants to join in on the effort for this project, I think we would love to end for volunteers, but you know, reach out, hello@downtownburnsville.org is a really great place to start, but social media, I mean anywhere that we are.
Do you want anything from us so that we can go to the business owner and you can say, you know, the Borough Council is totally supporting this or I don't know if that would help if there's some business owners that may be. A letter? I don't, a letter would be great to be able to bring. And, and then is there anybody on council that you can reach out to if they had questions that were council-specific for any reason about this? We would love to get questions from people. We welcome. And also any concerns or questions anyone has, because that will help us get further to, along to doing right things right for this town with this program.
And we will be reaching out to the public as the project evolves for their stories. Even just in the last couple of days, as a result of Saturday night's event, folks have shared their own stories about, you know, oh, would you know that this happened in the so and so of the 90s? And I'll not say what those things are right now, but you know, like these, these stories that you've never heard of. So it's.
And those are the stories that are going to be fun as people are walking from from place to place. There's going to be lag time, you know, we're going to have to fill it with.
Yeah, it's, it's really about selling.
Then you know what this used to be, you know, that Kings was an academia. Before that it was this and just that. How many, you know, there's a Facebook page, you know, you're from Burnsville and I love listening to, you know, some of the not many people in the hardware store used to be a volleyball, you know, so those are great things for new, new people in town to know about.
And especially our residents that are here now, because a lot of those residents are new and even those that are not so new, myself included. There's a lot of things I didn't even know and I still don't know. So it's really fun to be able to just feel more pride in our town with more stories that everyone is telling.
We have researched other towns' history tours and the, the big things that seem so far come out as unique is the way it's tied in with the material that's in the businesses and also taking the time to take the historical stories that have been so well-written already that exists in the library and making sure that they are speaking to the stories in a way that's compelling to read in a sign, which is different than when you're reading in a book and wanting to study something. And so we're, we're really excited to partner with the library and hopefully. Thank you.
Yeah, does that mean it's approved?
Thank you. There's something that says that you have the full support of the council and the mayor, in the mayor pursuing this. So. All right, so moving on. We didn't have an open session or I was not listed for a public hearing, which I haven't done for public hearings or something. So if you would like to speak now, please either use the raise hand icon on Zoom or come up to the X or raise your hand if you're here. And just when you speak, there's an X on the floor, which is the best place to stand. Please keep your comments to three minutes. First, keep your name and address so that Anthony can have it in the record. This is an opportunity for the public to share their opinions and comments. It's not a time for debate. But if you have a lot of questions or want to spend, get a lot more information, you can reach out to our administrator or myself and we'd be happy to schedule a meeting. So if anyone would like to be heard. Yeah, so Kathy Peachey on Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, good evening. Kathy Peachey, 70 Chilton in Burnsville. I really enjoyed that presentation on the Museum in the Streets. I think that's going to be a fun project. I'm sorry, I did not get the presenter's name. I know Olivia Manning, but I didn't get the presenter's name.
Well, my name is Lisa Diaz. Thank you for asking. I, I guess I didn't say that.
Thank you, Lisa. And then my, my question is about the, I need to backpedal a little bit about the transfer station of the quarry. I didn't know what the latest is. I thought that it went through. Then I thought there was a loophole and I thought the council was pursuing that. And now I think it's in full use or running full. I'm not sure. So I would just appreciate you letting me know what's going on with that. Because then I also remember that was, there was a thing about planting trees as part of the agreement with the transfer station. as part of the agreement with the transfer station. So I'd appreciate that update, if you don't mind.
Jack, can you provide anything? I never, we got a letter from the D E P. It's really in the hands.
It's been approved. I don't know that it's in operation yet.
Yeah.
Before the planning board um at some point, um and as far as the settlement, we went, I know they have to build a bridge close to the parking area and do several other things, but as far as.
Yeah, it's not. Yeah, they have to, because they're they're gonna build a building, they'd have to go to the planning board with those plans.
That's fair.
So it was approved by the D E P, but it is not in operation yet. And we did have a brief meeting with them about the bridge.
Yeah.
Um, because they need to build a bridge um so people can park and walk over to the field, which was one of the things we required them. So right now it's approved, but not in operation.
Where is it actually exactly gonna be there at the quarry site? With the bridge?
The bridge is on the road.
It's a culver.
It's a culver.
It's a replacement of a culver.
Oh.
Right, it's replacing the culver because the road, I don't know why. Why are they replacing it?
So you value your levels.
It's a thousand years old.
Yeah. And they're building a building also?
Yeah, they're starting to build a bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so people aren't walking on the culver, right?
Right.
So it's a separate walking area.
There should, yeah, they're supposed to make a footbridge for safety for people parking and walking to the Rose Bowl. And there they did have, there's some landscaping requirements as well, um but none of that is happening yet.
Okay, so this is still something in in progress. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
But you're not a bridge, not a car.
Well, now I'm thinking, yeah, of of pedestrian. I knew there was something there.
Uh, Eric, we were.
What's the building that you mentioned that they're building? What's that for?
We were done. Um, it's a bill, it's the building to process the recyclables, because it's gonna be done inside. Am I correct in that?
Okay. Big building then, huh?
I don't know. But that would have to be approved by the planning board.
That's right.
Yeah.
The name of it is Burnsville.
All right, well, thanks very much.
Hey, thank you. All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Council, Aaron Duck, over at Fifty One Crescent Drive. Uh, I wanted to come tonight and just share my thoughts on the Laurelwood Trail uh trail in the context of the overall housing that's going up, um sort of planned to go up across the street. Um, at the last planning board meeting, they had uh opine that eventually it was gonna come before the council as to whether or not to make uh access easement to that existing trail, a precondition for development. And I would urge the council that I do so. The Laurelwood Trail, uh, I mean, everyone knows what it is, but maybe just a little bit of background, it's it's twelve acres of um, you know, open space, uh dedicated open space. About a half mile, uh existent hiking trail through it. Um, you know, plan room for expansion, um, you know, uh the existing trail runs essentially from the center of the lot across the street uh up to Laurelwood and then um over to Round Top. Um, I think what Laurelwood, you know, provides and and the access, um, the the key, the access, uh not only is it, you know, hiking trail and natural area that, you know, people have, you know, said one of the two of their highest priorities um for recreation for our but it's also connectivity, I feel like, uh more than anything out Laurelwood. I think as an open space probably offers um greater potential on that front than any other park we have. Uh, we have existing easements, um recorded easements, uh haven't been utilized, that could connect your entire downtown area. Essex, Laurel, Chilton, um Somerset, even all of that um up not only into Laurelwood, but also pedestrian access to the the new park over two seventy-one. We all know there's vehicular access uh issues that are probably gonna take a little while straight now. Um, I think, you know, providing that pedestrian access um would be a great, you know, short-term solution. Um, and so, you know, when when it comes to, you know, the building that's going up, I see on the agenda, obviously, there's uh, you know, relocation of the of the trailhead. It doesn't need to be right where it is, certainly. Um, I would just say, you know, it that you know, more than anything else, some pedestrian access should be, you know, provided at that property. Uh, I know at planning board meetings, parking was an issue, you know, there's a lot of lot of units and um they don't need places to park and they're guests. Um, I wouldn't let that drive the discussion so much. I think there are, you know, options for parking. If you're gonna, I I see it first of all, more of a uh connecting trail than a, I'm gonna park my car, hike in and get back in my car and drive home. It's not really a destination trail as much, but to the extent that it is, I feel like, you know, you could probably um, you know, put a couple cars up at up at Laurelwood, you know, and that there's a pump station up there that, you know, you might be able to dedicate, you know, dedicate a couple uh spots in there for uh maybe over here, you know, behind the uh uh the treatment station, uh another possible uh place that there's never a, I I know there was at the planning board level, some discussion of a crosswalk there as well. Um, so I would just say pedestrian access, um being a key, you know, uh parking, and I don't think it is as big an issue, but that precondition of development to to allow pedestrian use, continued pedestrian use, I think is very important.
Yeah. Thanks, Eric. We're gonna be talking about this later, and I'm very sure.
Yeah, i- i- so this is Chad. Obviously, this is on the agenda like was mentioned. Um, I'm gonna need to make a council communication to the planning board on this issue, so uh it will be important for us to discuss later.
Yeah, and that is, you know, it's funny, because when you talk about parking, you know, it it's like when people go to the Y, they have to park close to the door. They're going in to workout, but they have to park outside the door. You know, if you're going to hike, you have to walk a little bit, like from across the street, park at Borough Hall. You know, that's why you're there, because you know, we don't have to have parking right here. So, yeah, if you were, that's, yeah, you have it. Diane's on. All right, great, thank you. Uh, anyone else want to be heard?
Like Carrie.
Carrie.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I ha- Aaron, having done such a good job of introducing the topic, I think I'll weigh in on the Laurelwood Trail. I've been biking around uh Burnsville every nook and cranny of the town for the last few weeks, and I have to say that getting up to Round Top in Laurelwood is one of the toughest things to do. If you live up there, if you wanted to get to Rose Bowl, or what we're we're gonna have pretty soon, a brand-new uh Nirvine Park with our, um, once the dam is out and we're, we've created our new stream park with a little bit more open space there. We will keep cars off the road if we have a way that folks that live on those steep uh streets up there can come directly down to Borough Hall uh and to Rose Bowl to access our parks. And I do see, I agree with Aaron, it's a major connectivity piece for us. Uh, so I would encourage the council to uh maintain that. I know that a Bo- a Boy Scout worked very hard to create that trail, and if we don't have a way to exit that trail down uh on two oh two, we will have lost what we what we set out to do in the first place. Uh, secondly, I just want to commend the downtown Burnsville and Lisa Diaz for all the work that they've been doing on the idea of the museums in the streets. Uh, and just chime in and say that I've seen it in operation. It's three different towns in Maine, uh Whiskassett, Newcastle, and uh Booth Bay Harbor. And, you know, you have tough winters up there, but these signs over the last few years have, they still look brand-new. So I want to speak for their durability and that I I do think it's a great idea for us to start to highlight our amazing history, um both uh up on the mountain in the time of uh the mountain colony and uh our re- revolutionary history and everything that we've got going on downtown. So good job, everybody, and I hope that we can see this come to fruition. Thanks.
Carrie, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Signs you've seen in um Maine, are they slanted or are they black?
They're straight up and down. The ones that I've seen mostly are straight up and down. It's possible the one in Whiskassett is is slanted. I don't recall, but I think they're straight up and down at least some of the time. Um, and that probably speaks to the durability, because the snow doesn't sit on top. Um, but I do, I do think that it would be easier to read perhaps if it were slanted. However, it does take up a little bit more uh horizontal space, so you know, maybe we have to be just a little bit flexible with our um property owners and business owners. Maybe they would have some input on that, on each individual sign.
Yeah.
But I think it would be wonderful for our downtown.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
There's a, there's a slanted sign uh on the walk-around matorar uh that speaks to Kate Macy Lad and her husband, Grandma.
Correct, that that is correct.
I've been walking that trail for probably five years, and it looks exactly the same today as it did five years ago, and it is very much on a slant.
Yeah, that's true.
It's true. The train station there on a slant.
Yeah.
They've been there a long time.
We have slants on our, we have our um rain gardens. I think they're on a slant. They haven't been up for too long, but they're looking very good.
Yeah.
They're they're in that easy read position, so perhaps that's not so much of an issue.
Yeah.
I thank you.
Museum and the Streets uh company does have a sign somewhere in the northeast here that is angled. They have a whole series that are angled, and they've been installed for over twenty years, and they look like you said.
Good, good to know. Okay. Uh, I see another, I can't see them these.
No.
Yeah, I know, you can't see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? All right, then I will close the public session. And we will move on, we have a public hearing. Uh, so I will hold the public hearing, our ordinance twenty twenty-two nineteen thirty-five allowing the Borough Public Works Committee to grant exceptions to the five-year moratorium on issuance of road opening permits for newly paved streets and amending section fourteen dash one, the Borough Code entitled Maintenance and Use of Sidewalks in Streets. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this? And basically, what we're doing is just giving the committee responsibility rather than it come each of them coming to the council all the time. Um, because you usually work on it and know it more intimately than we do anyway, so. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Would you like to move? I'm saying, I'm passing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen thirty-five on final reading and adopt as published. Roll call, please.
Before I call, Mr. McQueen is remote, and we'll have the eligible uh to go on on uh anything tonight.
Yeah, I I mean, yes, were you asking for my vote? Anthony, I couldn't hear you. I heard my name.
Can't have one, can't.
You can't have one being remote.
Uh, we we passed an ordinance that we could be remote twice a year.
You already used it up.
You sure about that?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Ram.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. For an error?
Yes.
Is an error?
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. All right, moving on to resolutions. We have twenty-two one ninety-six through twenty-two two oh five. Are there any that you want to pull out and or just discuss?
I have a question.
Yes.
On um twenty-two dash one ninety-five. Um, this is from October through April. However, the baseball kids do start practice at the end of March. I would like to see if we can change it to October through March.
What are they? Uh, it's only one hour, right? On Thursday, that's gonna be more than hours.
Tuesday.
Peter could be here, he does a part. I was here last summer in Valens and Manager.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it's on every Tuesday, uh maybe about three hours of putting setup and breakdown. We distribute for an hour, but just give us time to set up and break down. So what time do they know we start practice?
At school. I mean, it's school starts normally, um, and Chad, you're.
Yeah, w- we usually start taking the field the uh first week of March.
First week of March.
Oh, yeah, those little girls say football, they're trying softball.
True, the girls' high school team uses playmat?
Yeah, not for softball.
They they do, they play some games there, but they don't practice there.
Does anybody practice there?
Yeah, um, yeah, actually, quite a few. All the single A and double A instructional practice there. And also our seven U and eight U travel teams practice there.
That's starting, starting.
Yeah, so the travel teams start in March. Um, the league officially starts practices usually when the the snow clears, second or third week of March.
I'm uh, I'm on the call, just so you know, I'm, I was able to dial in. Um, I don't think that's a deal breaker for us, as as long as we could go back to the parking lot that we're using now. Um, you know, we would be through the the worst of the weather by mid-March, so that seems reasonable to me.
Okay. So we'll just say, as it gets closer, we'll see how we're doing, and yeah. Now the weather is, whether.
To the end of March.
Yeah, so the end, I thought you said you started in March.
No, 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 no.
No. Through the end of March, through October, through the end of March. Okay, that's what we're approving.
Mayor, just want to point out that uh Peter was very diligent in getting us uh both along with some reason and some kids get insurance.
Right.
We're all square.
Good, yeah. And, you know, he can, you can coordinate with um Mark and we two or me on the schedule to make sure that there's no conflicts.
We verified uh that there would be no conflict.
Ready.
With the building, but I didn't ask the question.
About the fields, okay. All right, so with that, uh, I jumped on uh one ninety-eight, any other ones? All right.
Second.
Um, roll call, please.
This is Mary?
Yeah.
Senator Mary?
Yes.
Good for you, Jill?
Yeah.
Good for Emily?
Yes.
All right, so that was update. Um, I did attend the boutique Italian grand, oh, it's somewhere.
No, I just made thumbs up.
Yeah.
Uh, was um September twenty-eighth, uh at a new store in the Burnsville Center, uh Lily was there as well. They did a really nice job at the, I still haven't seen the pictures, so I knew about the pictures.
Haven't either.
Okay. Because we wanted to advertise it as important, we need to get the picture, but really, a great store, great new owners, uh two women that own it. Um, the twenty-ninth, we had an OEM clergy meeting, uh which Tom attended, and um it's really, it's a great group. It's all local clergy and coming up with a lot of good ideas for providing services to the community. Uh, we also, the land use committee met with the walking museum folks. On the thirtieth, I attended the Elvis concert at the Burnsville Theater, which was incredible. It was really great, and uh Harvey is gonna be doing more of those kinds of things in the theater. So he's really, he's gonna have, I mean, he had a comedy night, he's gonna do a whole bunch of different things, so I encourage you to watch for his posts and support them when they come along. It was, I think it was ten dollars per ticket or something. It was, it was a great show. Um, I attended on the the second, which was a Sunday, the New Jersey Conference of Mayors had a half-day conference in Spring Lake largely focusing on um the wind farms that are coming to the beach and talking about different ways that that's gonna happen, what kinds of controls we can have on it. So uh there'll be more information coming on that. He's largely um South Jersey mayors, of course, because they're the most concerned. Um, but they also had uh some other, you know, some of the energy people there. It was, it was, I learned a lot more than I knew about wind and wind energy, solar energy. Uh, the apple festival was this weekend, a Saturday at the farmer's market. Um, I always get to pick the winning apple basket, and we had a nice little meet the mayor sign in case people had questions for me. Unfortunately, most people just wanted to me and Harry it. They didn't want to. Harry was the hit. But, you know, I'll I'll probably try and do it again some other time, just to be out there and accessible if people want to ask questions. And then, of course, Saturday was the fabulous History Ghost Tour, which was just incredible. I can't say enough good things about it. It was just um, just so well done, very professional, well organized. We had, uh, and thank you to the police as well, because they really kept the crowds moving, kept everybody separate, so the groups didn't overlap, they stopped the traffic. And I noticed, because I did the same thing, a lot of people going into the restaurants after or before. So it brought a lot of business downtown, so keep up the good work, guys. That was great. Um, just for the council coming up on Wednesday is the Somerset County Governing Officials Association. Uh, Wednesday night, it's always, I think, the second Wednesday of the month, this one's in Rocky Hill, which is like an hour from here for, for this end of the county, but. I will be going, I don't think anybody else wanted to go. Uh, downtown Burnsville has a community meeting on the nineteenth, do you know where that is yet? Okay, to be determined.
Location to be determined, yes.
And um, the twenty-third, I've got another ribbon cutting grand celebration for, which was proud to smile dentistry, but I think they're changing it into aesthetic.
No, you know where I'm at. They were aesthetic.
Oh, and now they're going to.
Now they're proud.
Thank you, so um, they're having a, a two o'clock, a big celebration, so stop by and they're at, in the Mariko Building on Anderson. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much my stuff, um, Tom?
Okay, just a few things, uh, the pickleball courts moving forward, if you see this first coat of paint, uh, we can use the uh. Glass carded and dry it out a little bit. Um, this Thursday, we are meeting with suburban engineers to uh review the uh preliminary plan for the utility work to go into the poller grounds. For the pavilion and lighting, and so that we can then get moving with the trails uh there as well. Um, the Somerset County Municipal Administrators Association, we've approached the county uh shared services folks to uh work with us. Uh, investing the healthcare insurance challenge before us as a result of the state's. Substantial increase in uh premiums that uh have been reported, so more to come on that. Um, with respect to the clergy association, kudos to our OEM team and Kevin. And uh, just the, to add on with the mayor said, um. The main thrust of this group is to um take advantage of all the resources that churches have and make available for us. In the event of an emergency, uh, and then to work with them so that things aren't duplicated, uh, everyone has a chance to focus on something. But it's, if you belong to one of the faith communities and you want to get involved in a town effort uh in a very meaningful way. Approaching your pastor about how, you know, they can assist. Um, that local community and contribute to the OEM effort would be very effective and definitely want to encourage that. Um. Oh, I reached out to the county engineers office to discuss the traffic flow situation around Columbia as directed by council. And we have uh scheduled some time the next week to discuss what sort of study we can be requesting, that's all, I'll go back on that shortly. And lastly, uh, my sympathies to my fellow mess fans.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, next is relocation and trailhead for Round Top Laurelwood Trail, Diane, I have visual aids, can't hurt me. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Aaron and Carrie both, they're on trails committee with me and they've been doing a tremendous job. Can you, okay, this is the trail right now, if you look at the uh picture on the top, the trail is somewhere, if you go about a third away. In Anthony, could you move the cursor like um from the left-hand side of there, about, about right there. The trail entrance right now is like somewhere around that vicinity, I don't know if it's going to be, uh, the building will be on top of it or the twenty-five foot high wall. Um, but anyway, it needs to be moved to the left, but we're going to go to the other slide first. Just scroll up so we can see the other, the map, you can make it a little bigger. This map is from uh the open space, two thousand thirteen open space um plan and uh the mayor was on the open space committee at the time it was written, it's a great plan, if anybody wants it, it's on the Borough website. And I also have a copy, I can send them, the plan provides a vision or roadmap for future trail expansion and borough connectivity. Similar to the historic rural trail network, it shows where trails and possible trails connections can be made, as well as areas where existing sidewalks. And pedestrian-friendly streets can be used to connect boroughs, open space parcels together with each other and to trails in neighboring town. Uh, the open spaces committee's thought was to establish areas in the borough and that they called greenways, and if you can see, there's three greenways on this. Map, the Mindbrook Greenway, Patriots Path Greenway, and the Little Brook and North Branch Greenway, they're all areas of pres- preserved open space that can be linked. The Laurelwood Round Top Trail as it exists today uh is located in the Mindbrook Gateway, it's, it is very small, but a very pivotal, as, as Erin was alluding to before. A very pivotal part of what can be a much larger borough connectivity project. The trail entrance or exit, depending on where you're coming from, um, has to be um, make, remain accessible to the borough residents and to do that, the borough needs to have an easement on this property. Now, if you can go back up to the first slide, Anthony, please, thank you. Um, the way that I would think that this could be done, looking at this map, I don't know whether you have to keep those trees there at the bottom left-hand corner, if you didn't, that would give you four parking spaces which. For trails during the day and could be used for guests of the apartment complex at night. A tr- a path can go right along the left-hand side that takes you right back to the end of the property in the, in the upper left-hand corner. To the new entrance that would have to be cut for the trail. And also, um, uh, DPW, Department of Public Works, if they have a machine, we might be able to go back there and it's possible that they would even be able to. Cut out that section to go over there. That was, so I really, I want to make sure that this trail, the trail's going to be doing a tremendous amount of work. To get all of our trails marked and, and maintain and manicured and maintained. And we're working on getting them advertised on the website so that actually the people who live in town will know where they are, so they can use them. And right now, this trail, is it being used a lot? Well, of course not, because nobody knows it's even there and, and we're working very hard to change that and we don't want. A building that we really don't want there to be, to be blocking that entrance.
What, what is the narrow brown strip there in the back, is that, that's a wall?
That's the twenty-five foot wall that's going to be, so you have to move the entrance, yes, so you have to move the entrance because you don't want anybody walking. Right now, we have, we have this giant wall on the side of them, and also.
But saying they can come off the parking lot.
Yes, to be, so if you take, you go way to the left side of the parking lot, it pa- it doesn't even have to be a sidewalk, it could be a uh. Um, a chip, wood chip pad, yeah, and it doesn't have to be huge, it just has to be a path and it has to be signed that this is the way for the trails, and so we need a.
Then.
An easement.
Are you sure that the, because it looks like the, so Anthony, can you move your cursor down? Stop it, go over to the gray area.
Yeah.
You're saying that's the wall, that's, that's, that's a, I think that's a sidewalk.
No, I, it's a wall, oh, oh, maybe it's, maybe that is a sidewalk.
I think it's a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that, that is the sidewalk.
Yeah, but the, well, the problem with that, I think it goes all the way across.
Well, okay.
So you're.
They have engineers, I'm sure they can figure it out.
Well, no, what the point I'm trying to make is that, is you're going to, they can use, this is not, it's not going to be open on this end, it's going to be a wall. There, well.
But not on the front, not on the parking side, the parking side.
This is a wall all the way.
Yeah, that's a wall all the way down, yes.
So you're saying it needs to be here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. Kind of kind of situation, you know. Parking by the whole stop, have you ever seen that? It's like a trail from the whole parking lot of Littlest Office.
To get to the trail, yeah.
We just have good signs, so you can see it.
Yeah, and that parking lot is round, that whole parking lot is now, so.
This would be the planning board.
Right, well, I guess, I guess the question is, is the developer of this town.
To develop.
To mandate that they have to relocate the trailhead, or is it the DPW for the borough that would actually park at the point?
Uh, no, I want the borough to have the um, an easement on the property and. I want the developer to do a trail and, and the land parking for.
Yeah.
Trailgoers, we, we don't need a lot of spaces, just a few spaces during the day, that need parking.
The issue's going to be, Diane, is, I, I, I don't, I have, I'm trying to recall the application, I believe they may have been one spot short of the mandated parking. Anyway, so I, I think the issue was that there wasn't parking to be given.
Well, what about the trees in the corner there, the lower.
Yeah, I mean, so, so that, I, 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 that, that's a different lot, right, Tom C?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, is that lot borough owned or is it, what's the status of that lot?
The trees and the one on the Patriot is right there, right, those, those trees, do they have to be there? Cause that's.
No, tho- those, those are sim- those are simply just landscape uh renderings. But I believe, I believe there's actual, there's additional parking underneath those trees, I, I believe, I, I think the angle is wrong here. I don't have the official plans, the paper plans in front of me right now.
Okay.
But I know parking is a, is a, is an issue, the number of spots that they're required to have.
Even if it's a problem with parking, what's across the street, us?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, it, they could also provide, we could have the easement to provide the path and also that they relocate the um, the, the trail entrance.
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable, Diane, um, I, I think that's reasonable and possible, a- and we can bring up the parking issue, I, I just don't know if there's any parking to be had.
It's worth raising with them, maybe it is even something to your point, Diane, that they could be open more public parking during the day and then at. Six or seven, when we know nobody's going to be hiking, it's closed to guests of residents or something, right? That can be an option, or as a fallback, the borough law property across the street where we could, you know.
But they would still need to have, we still need an easement to provide a path.
Absolutely, I think we're all, I don't support that.
Um, Jack, what is the council's role in this?
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to think, it means going to the planning board.
Yes, right.
It requires.
But we're discussing it, because Chad's going to have to go.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I can tell you, so at the planning board, the conversation was, okay, we can relocate the trail, but the planning board deferred to council. As to how the trail relocation should happen. Um, so, Jack, what I think we need is, is a recommendation from council that, yes, we want to relocate the trailhead. Uh, we believe that it can run along the ba- and I, I'm sort of making, I, I'm not being official, I'm just sort of saying the types of things we can say, we like it relocated along the back of the property. And parking for, for that instance will be at the Borough Hall, because I think part of the planning board recommendation right now is actually striping. A walkway across two oh two, um, right in front of this building, so there'll be a crosswalk for it.
That's fine, but they also have to have a pathway on their property that takes people there. They can't, I don't, you don't want people walking across the street through the parking lot.
You mean next door?
No, you, no, on their property.
Across one like, it demarked on the.
Oh, you want a sign that says a path that takes them right to the entrance, you don't want them just meandering around a part of the building and parking. So do we need to send a letter to the planning board saying this is what we recommend?
Yeah, that probably makes more sense, just.
Yes.
Or recommending the relocation of the trail and then part of the second.
A- a- and if I could ask, you know, Tom C, if we could put a little planner thought into this. Um, I, I think we, it, it sounds like we're all aligned that we want to maintain the trail, we want to find a path to yes. Um, but if we can find a yes that works, that's, that's sort of what we want to do, right, so.
Yeah, alright, so we're charging uh. Tom and, and Jack are coming up with a. Well, and the thing is, we don't know how far the lot is, so we don't know exactly, is the building actually blocking the trail, is the wall blocking the trail, is the trail behind there, we don't even know where the entrance is going to end up being, what happens until they start.
Well, no, I mean, they should have very specific plans before they start.
Yes, planning board plan should be.
They should be very specific, so if you have us, um, I don't know, Tom, you have a site plan, just, because we can't do anything with the trail now or until we see.
Not, not, I don't have it in front of me now.
No, no, I mean.
And, and to, I, Diane was making the point, this final site plan is going to be important to this. Um, because obviously this is still, it only has a preliminary review and they have to come back for final with a lot of recommended changes, so. There are things that may fundamentally change, so the important thing is that we want it, we want to maintain it, and this is the idea of how we want to do it.
Yeah, so if Tom can get this, the site plan, the preliminary site plan, maybe go out and look at it. As to how this could work, and then we can put a letter memo to the planning board.
Okay, I think it's a concept response too.
Yes.
More than the, the video.
Right, you know, a general direction and then there are engineers and contractors who have to figure it out, but. I think if we send them a memo that strongly recommends what the best way to do this, okay, I'm just trying to look at it.
You know, if, if I can just bring up one more topic that I brought, I, I'd just like to get the rest of council's opinion, so I mentioned that one of the, the, the conditions that was proposed. Was uh striping a walkway across two oh two to Borough Hall and have the thoroughfare, the connectivity happen on that side of the road. Um, if you think of how to get from there up to town to the train station, et cetera, I just want to make sure that that's consistent with everybody's vision. Understanding of the way that the town's laid out, I, I think it works for me, but I just want to make sure that we get the rest of the council's opinion.
And the walkway would be on what side, on the right side or the left side?
So i- if you're going north, it would be ultimately, the pedestrian traffic would trans- traverse on the right side of that road. If you're going north towards town from Borough Hall.
But how did it, where do you want the walk on this site? Which side, by the parking lot or the other side?
Well, it doesn't make sense to not put it on the parking lot, right? A lot of how that front actually is working, is, is there a wall coming out that, or to the building or? What is that domey thing?
Oh, that's a little.
That's, that's, that's an outdoor sort of, outdoor space for the residents.
Okay, so they'd really be accessing towards the parking lot.
Yeah, so that's where it should put that, and that would be fine.
That would, could be a path for both.
Yeah.
For them to get to town and for people to get to the.
The trail, it just would have to be marked and they have to have a path that takes them straight back.
And then they cross there and, yeah, I think it's, it's wide enough for walking on the northbound side. Definitely, the southbound side is not conducive to walking.
Yeah, that was my thought ex- as well, mayor, I, and I think the future development, since there's, there's likely going to be some development on that side, we can mandate sidewalks. And hopefully have a, a, you know, a pedestrian-friendly area, the entirety of that north side of the road.
Okay. Good, thank you. Alright, moving on to the twenty twenty-three farmer's market, and I see Madeline is here. Um, you're going to do a winter market again, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Request is really difficult to find, and the winter end time. Do you want to?
So, uh, yeah, you know, we shortened it to two hours, which makes sense because it's cold. Uh, January, so is that the same for Valentine? Last time?
Yeah.
And then the summer is.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I did ask about, um, because at some point, we are going to have a new tenant in the train station. So just in terms of, we don't really know yet. How they're going to be using that building, um, but in terms of parking and pedestrians, if they're serving lunch and the. Market is still going, so one, how that's going to all work out.
We, we will.
Yeah, so, but I, it's, it's in, people know about it, I brought it up and it's on the agenda for when we get to those conversations. And you did find a place, um, John McDowell helped you find storage, yes?
Yeah.
Good.
We all came with the same idea, with the, and advantage, you know, for the small shed. Firefly with that, run that building, not, not change.
Right, so good. Alright, anybody have a problem with this, we all good with this?
Great.
We don't need, we just need consent-ish.
Yeah.
Consensus, we're good.
We're good, we can do a motion for the.
Motion.
There you go. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Alright, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
And you can always use volunteers, right?
Yes.
So anybody out there, I mean, you know, feel free to help with the farmer's market.
Can I just say one thing, though?
Yes.
Um, I took forms to thank the people that stepped up to help me, you know, after that last one, we had far to get everything ready. Uh, I wanted to thank specifically Pat Kennedy Grant and Wilson Day for helping a lot. And as well as the mayor for her encouragement and Anthony, all the super appreciate, so, uh, and the volunteers too, it's kind of very grateful for all that.
Thank you. We are equally grateful to you for taking up the banner and, you know, keeping uh its legacy going on, it really, I think it means a lot to people, so thank you. And by the way, that tr- trail, the Laurelwood Trail, Ed did a lot of hand labor on that trail. With his hoe and he was up there.
I was thinking.
Yes, he was, he, he basically was the initiator of getting that done. So, yeah. Okay. Okay, now we have our zone six alteration to redevelopment plan, and I'm not sure where we left this. Um, John Zabel is gonna do a.
Can you give us a summary of the ordinance and their history?
Yes, and for those that don't know, John Zabel is our borough planner.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Room, wow. What do you have us all over for drinks?
It's a dream. It's a better view than the bedroom I'm in. Uh, not to belabor the points, uh, the reason that we're here talking about this is that it stems from a development application that was proposed within the Quimby Lane redevelopment area. The issue, however, was that we got the zoning wrong. The applicant originally thought, as I did, that this was in the downtown Claremont area of the new downtown zone, and they prepared their drawings in conformance with that, and the property was being developed, uh, almost virtually variance-free, um, consistent with the downtown. Um, Board Member Thompson, um, correctly pointed out that this was in the, actually in the Quimby Lane redevelopment area. Uh, it's at the very corner of Mill and Claremont, and it takes into, it's within area six. So it was included in the redevelopment plan. Um, so the the board could not proceed with the application because it didn't have jurisdiction. The redevelopment plan requires that the applicant first must obtain a developer's agreement with uh the council, and then they could proceed. So we had to put that on hold, and then through subsequent conversations, it turned out that uh, there was a, there was a little bit of a disconnect between how they were developing and the zoning regulations. The applicant uh was is proposing an eight-unit townhouse development, and I would emphasize that that is a permitted use in both the downtown zone and within the Claremont, um, within the uh Quimby Lane redevelopment. Uh, it was a matter of tweaking it, tweaking the redevelopment plan so that it could proceed in a manner that would be, you know, almost variance, variance-free, which is what most applicants want. Uh, I was tasked with amending the redevelopment plan to make that happen, thinking that, okay, this was something that was positive. The usage permitted, um, the ma- changes were minor. Uh, to facilitate development within a redevelopment plan, which I thought was going to be something that the borough had intended and wanted to see happen. The complication, however, is that area six is severely impacted by floodplain, and most specifically, according to the map on page twelve of the redevelopment plan with floodway. Now, if you understand anything about floodplain regulations, uh, they're very strict, they're managed, uh, they're regulated by the NJDEP, and the floodplain is divided into two uh portions. Uh, you're either in the floodplain or you're in the floodway. And this is, the mapping indicates that this property is within the floodway. Now, floodway is a severely constrained area where very little to no development is permitted, period, end of story. And I found that interesting because the permitted uses in area six, if you look at the Quimby Lane Plan, allows for a lot of different types of of uses, many of which, and this starts on page uh thirty-nine, um, it requires land area, which, if you look at the floodway, isn't gonna happen, but because of the floodway and the presence of the floodway, the plan was designed for area six to limit development to the footprint of the existing building. That would be, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm gonna confirm this with Bob Brightley, who's the planning board engineer, um, that's consistent with some of the regulations of DEP, that, you know, you're really constrained in your footprint. However, this particular property has a lot of developable area towards the front end of the property, towards uh Claremont, and then it drops off. Uh, in fact, it has more so, it's what, it's probably the least impacted by floodway mapping than any other property uh fronting on Claremont Road that's within the Quimby Lane redevelopment area. So what, what I did was, um, I made some tweaks to the plan. Uh, the changes were minimal. It it basically introduced, um, it reduced the side yard to, from ten to seven feet. Um, it has two front yards, which, uh, according to the redevelopment plan, because it's a corner property, is zero, so that that was, that didn't pose an issue. And I I allowed, or I amended the plan to suggest that they be permitted, um, fifty percent building coverage. Got forty percent building coverage, fifty percent impervious coverage, and that would apply to the entire property. Uh, however, they were concentrating development to the front. Uh, again, those are are very minimal building and development footprints, uh, for the the kind of development that you want to see in a redevelopment area, but that's because uh, we don't want to overdevelop properties. We also have to take into account the ability or the the presence of the floodplain. Uh, interestingly enough, the property without being in Quimby Lane, um, it was in the in the downtown Claremont section, it's right at the cusp of the Claremont subzone and the core subzone. When you compare the two zones, I mean, if we had never tapped, if the borough had never adopted the downtown, I mean, the Quimby Lane redevelopment plan, then the the minimum front yard would be five feet. The side yard would be five feet, and the height of the buildings would be permitted to be thirty-five feet to the parapet. I changed the height to forty feet so that we can allow for some more architectural design along the frontage of the property. Um, so the the, in terms of, of, and building, and in terms of improved lot coverage, the downtown uh Claremont Zone allows for eighty percent coverage, I limited to fifty. So we're not giving away the store here. In fact, I I think, and I expressed it to the planning board, I and I owe them uh more explanation and and review. When you do a compare and comparison, the final say is gonna rest with DEP in terms of the building envelopes and what will be permitted and what won't be permitted, and area six of the redevelopment plan. Uh, the developable portion of the uh, that this particular parcel, let's call it block seventy-one lot six, um, it will conform to these requirements and and will stay out of the floodplain, which is important, because when you read the Re- the Quimby Redevelopment Plan, you'll you'll right away, it notes the presence of the of the Mill Millbrook and and the floodplain and how we need to preserve that, and also to create a park. And so in in conversations with the the, with the applicant, they are perfectly willing to develop and then form a connect, a public connection uh, to the portions of the property that cannot be developed because it's in the floodway, and to create the trail system and connections that are contemplated by the, by the plan. So I I don't see tremendous inconsistencies in what's being proposed. I just need to provide a better explanation and a comparison uh, to the planning board to uh have them uh understand what my thinking was and and, you know, and proceed with whatever changes they feel are are appropriate. Um, but it's an ambitious redevelopment plan because you permit, for example, in area six, mixed-use hotels, uh, financials to, you know, all kinds of different um land uses that are fairly intense, and so that they they do need um, area, but I don't see that area happening because of the floodway. I'm asked, I've asked the borough uh engineer, the planning engineer, to um verify the floodway boundaries, uh, just so that we are accurate in our assessment, but if it's floodway, uh, it's gonna be very constrained. Ironically, this is the one parcel I think that you may actually realize some development because of the fact that it has developable area outside of the floodway, if if that's actually the floodway. That's up to be cognizant of arperian uh rights that extend to the pot, to the brook, um, where you really can't put anything as well, it's another consideration in redevelopment. So the the changes are are not uh significant, in my opinion. Um, they are highlighted in the plan in bold and strikeouts. I prepare ordinances as uh, the state does, where you can see the changes and you can easily identify them uh in the legislation. Just for the benefit of the public, a redevelopment plan adoption is an ordinance, and what it does is it supersedes anything that already exists in zoning, so it became the new law governing development within that area. Uh, another observation that I pointed out to the planning board was that the regulations and the design standards within the Quimby Lane redevelopment plan mirror the downtown uh architectural and design standards, which, apology, who prepared the plan was directed to make sure that they were consistent, and they are, for the most part, and and so again, um, these are, th- this is what led us to where we are today. And uh, I guess uh we'll be discussing this a little further with the, with the planning board. I was gonna do a report, but I've been pulled into a Mount Laurel litigation and trial, so I've been constrained myself in terms of time.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Zabel to come before council, because this is a change in zone, i- in some of the zone. Um, John, I I I don't, maybe you can just quickly go over, I know you you outlined the the bold and underlines, really, that the changes here, um, we have a sidewalk change, but I I think the other one that you illustrated that I think requires some e- explanation is the change um from the footprint, and if I get this wrong, please correct me. Put designation in the zone to one that goes to um a more traditional percentage coverage of 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 lot.
Sure, I I can, I can speak to all the changes. Um, the lot area requirement is five thousand square feet, no change. Maximum uh impervious coverage, the original regulation was coverage uh improved, improved coverage shall not exceed existing conditions, and that that I think is consistent with the NJDEP regulations, assuming that there's, everything in there is in the floodway. Uh, I've changed to fifty percent. Um, and again, that that is modest, given the level of of development that you're seeking within the redevelopment area. The maximum building coverage, again, was limited to the coverage, it's not exceeding existing conditions. Uh, the, the applicant is, on this particular property, it's forty percent. Again, modest building footprint. Much of the property, over half of it, is going to be preserved as open space, so I I I didn't think that was an issue. The setback for front yard doesn't change, side yard uh from ten foot to seven foot. What's interesting is in the Claremont Zone, you were permitting five feet, so we're still within that range. In fact, we're a little better than what would have existed had we gone with just the uh, the downtown plan. Uh, the rear yard doesn't change. I did change, um, building height, I added another five feet, just because what I explained to the planning, planning board is, when you top buildings uh to twenty-five feet to the bottom of it, even thirty feet to the top of a of a parapet, you're you're encouraging flat, flat uh roofs. Uh, sometimes you need to allow for some peaks, and what that does is uh add architectural interest to the design of the of the building that you're proposing, and that's what we're looking for, I thought, you know, that we want to get some architectural interest. Uh, forty feet is not gonna overwhelm that particular area. Uh, it's an extra five feet and uh, well, ten feet according to the Quimby Lane, but five feet according to the downtown Claremont zoning regulation, so five feet is imperceptible to to a large degree, and it allows for a better design, I think, in architecturally for townhouses. Um, and then again, uh, the the residential density was limited to eighteen. Uh, we changed that to nineteen. I mean, one extra unit, just so it doesn't put it into a use variance category. Um, and again, keep in mind that this was once your affordable housing overlay zone. Uh, while there are overlay, while there are housing uh requirements attached to this area pursuant to the Quimby Plan, we do want to make sure that we capture residential units, so, you know, eight units there, we get two. Uh, so that that's something to bear in mind. And then again, um, sidewalks, we went from eight to six feet. Now, eight feet is is the norm for redevelopment of downtowns, only because what you want to do is be able to allow for activities within the street. Uh, the street you want, you you want to be able to plant, you want to be able to put street, streetscaping furniture, have activities, outdoor dining. Eight feet is something that that I, it was proposed both by the downtown uh redevelopment, we plan and the Quimby Plan. That, but you're looking at Claremont, and I'm not sure that you're going to get the kind of foot traffic along that section of the redevelopment areas that you would get, for example, down in the core along two oh two. So I didn't think that sacrificing two feet, which the applicant, and I don't think anybody else on that side of the road has to give, given the constraints of the floodway, uh, to be able to require an eight-foot, requires a widening, and it pushes development, and you don't have really a lot of room to work with because of the floodplain, so I didn't think two feet, at least in that one area, uh, isn't going to make a significant impact on the overall plan. The, uh, again, you know, I don't know how much is gonna occur on Claremont in this section, on that part of the redevelopment area because of the presence of the floodway, but again, that was the rationale behind that. Uh, everywhere, and by the way, the changes are solely limited to area six. Nothing else in the Quimby Plan is being uh touched. Uh, that was at the direction of the governing body, which directed that. Only this particular area be looked at. Originally, the applicant had asked that they be put in area four, and in consultation with uh our redevelopment attorney, uh, we mutually agreed, no, we weren't gonna do that. We were gonna be consistent in how we applied the regulations for the other properties, so that's where we we landed in terms of of the changes.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I know we had this on for a public hearing, but I thought we were gonna move in. Delay it or table it, or what are we doing?
I would, I would, well, I'll defer to Jack, but you know, just carry it and give the planning board a little more time, which they appreciate it.
John, there's town, these are townhouses?
Yes, yes.
All right.
And townhouses are permitted within the downtown zoning and also within the Quimby Lane redevelopment plan.
Yeah.
So it i- is something that the the borough is trying to encourage. It's a good transitional use, uh, particularly in that corner, because everything going further north is going to be poly-residential. So it's a great transition down into the uh downtown in terms of of the commercial type mixed uses that you're looking to promote with the redevelopment plan and the downtown zoning. Uh, so it's a, it's a great corner. What's interesting is it's at the cor- very corner of of both of the of the, uh, it anchors that corner of the redevelopment area and also the uh downtown Claremont area.
What's the average square foot of these units?
Well, I I don't have the plans in front of me, I apologize, they're at the office. Um, I I don't recall, but I will tell you that it's all outs, if they're not large footprints and they're all it's all set back to the street and does not impact the rear of the property where the stream is, or the floodplain or floodway. But I I don't, I don't have the exact square footage, I apologize.
Small, like one bedroom and studios?
No, no, they're they're two, they're two-bedroom uh townhouses. Um, they're going to be rentals, which is a little unusual, but we'll take it. Um, and I pointed out that they're gonna have to provide, you know, uh, some kind of a, a, they have to address the Mount Laurel requirements somehow.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we discussed that before, John, just.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I, my understanding in discussions with the governing bodies, it'd be in lieu of, because of the scale of the project, it's it's so small.
I also agree. But I, but I I I think it's important for the council to consider, and it, look, uh, this is a a zone change, so this affects uh, what, a total of six or seven lots, John?
Yeah, yeah, but but keep in mind, Councilman, that that those other lots are completely in the floodway, according to the mapping provided by topology. That means that you're not, it doesn't, it's not gonna matter what what we're gonna, fifty percent or whatever, because there's gonna be probably no development allowed, you know, in terms of the floodway, so um, you're gonna, i- i- unfortunately, you know, we need to have applications go to DEP to determine footprints, but the the bottom line is that uh they're gonna be severely constrained anyway, uh, in terms of of how much they can build in the floodway, if anything at all.
Okay, Tom, you wanna say something?
Yeah. Sheriff, we were clear, Councilman Greenfield, you asked how many units, did you get the answer?
Yeah, yes. No, it's nineteen.
No, 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 eight, 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 eight townhouse units. The density converted into a half acre is equivalent to nineteen, blowing an acre.
I thought it was eight units, that's like nineteen.
It's, it's, let me explain, it's eight units on a half acre, which translates to nine, a little bit more than eighteen. So they're not far off. As far as I can tell, this application is is pretty much exactly what the plan contemplated with the mine, with these minor, what I consider to be fairly minor changes. Uh, and it is a zone change, Councilman McQueen, you're correct, but it's an amendment to the existing zoning and only to the extent that I've described. We're not changing, you know, the land uses, we're not changing the other zones, subzones, uh, areas. It's, we're trying to get development, you know, we need to get some shovel, at some point, a shovel in the ground to get, to form the, to act as the catalyst uh, and and to kind of, uh, you know, get things moving before economic conditions get much worse than they are now, which they're anticipating in the next six to eight months.
Okay, thank you, John, and actually, that that is then becoming an eyesore on that corner. It really is.
Yeah, and if you compare the footprint of the existing building to that of what's being. Yeah, and if you compare the footprint of the existing building to that of what's being proposed, it's not that far off. Because the existing home that's there, I think it's, yeah, um is constrained by the same D E P regulations that this project is.
Yeah, so we are just carrying over the public session.
So we, by motion, you should continue the public hearing until the.
I'm sorry, what, what date? What date, you wanna carry, carry the, because the board won't probably be considering this until later, because they're booked for November. It's not on for this coming Thursday, I mean, I could try to talk them into getting it back to you with some kind of recommendation. Uh but what date were you looking at, Jack?
That's too soon?
I will, I will, I will, I'll, I'll get, I'll talk to Franklin Cole and see if we can get this back on the agenda for the thirteenth.
As long as you get it done before December, so.
May, Mayor, if we're gonna push this back to the planning board, is it possible, would it be out of order for me to see if there is any council comments? Or just thoughts on, on the proposed? Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Parking decals, I have a question. I think what we're gonna do is send this to the finance committee, rather than have us all sit here and argue over it.
Good night, everybody.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna argue over it on the finance either.
No, I think we have to really uh kind of get a look at the.
Yeah, I, I was, I was joking, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, you want my question or you don't care? Oh, no, I didn't talk to him that. My question is, the amen and lot is included in this. Um and if construction starts on that lot, we're gonna have to refund people and find another place for them to park. So um we need to plan that. Good point, that is my point. Yeah, but I think we need, you know, I'd like to look at the whole history of how much we've collected in the past, what the last couple of years have. Done and what our expenses are, kind of do a deep analysis of this before we vote on anything. Good, you okay with that? All right, so let's do that, we'll send it to finance. Sixty-three birds.
Yeah, the only issue on this is whether to hire a property manager. Borough's gonna acquire title, I think, on the thirtieth, I'm not sure when our PM is gonna wanna take over the property from us. Probably not till the spring, so during that period, there are tenants in the building. My recommendation would be that we hire a property manager, rather than having someone in the borough all trying to. Supervise residential tenants.
So would that be like a realtor, real, realty company?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get some quotes.
No, or, yeah, being the superintendent of a rental property. Any unfinished business?
Mayor, I actually, I'm not sure if it's unfinished or if it's new, but sort of in between.
What?
So I, I know that we've had a bunch of side conversations now that we've allocated the funds for the Bird's Ave project. To start uh and instruct the engineer to start considering the sidewalk projects, the two blocks that'll be remaining. So, you know, Tom, can we, can we get that started, that, and get the engineering going down that path?
Chad, we're gonna discuss that in the Public Works Committee.
Even better, perfect.
Good, okay. Um so, new business, um I just, I had shared this article from Don Ellen that offers tax breaks. For downtown redevelopment, um which I had been asked, reached out to Tom. Because he said he thought we, you know, maybe we already did this, because a lot of towns do, and it turns out we don't. So this would be, I think, probably more for smaller projects. But um, you know, if you recall, when the music studio redid that building. And they had called and asked if there was any, anything we could do for them, we had nothing. This could help us with people who want to, except that you still have to call it an area and need it rebuilt, even if it's a one building.
We have the location, right, it's similar to the redevelopment.
But then at least, you know, what happens is they don't get taxed on. They reass, like, you reassess it, okay, I had a building that was worth seven hundred thousand, now it's a million. But I'm only gonna still pay taxes on seven hundred for five years or three years.
Yes.
So that they kind of get their investment back.
Right, and it's not uh, it's not negotiable like the pilot is under redevelopment, it's a standard statewide policy. If you go through the process of declaring an area in need of rehabilitation. Then this would apply to anyone that does anything to trigger. Uh the construction permit, which would then trigger uh reassessment, um value of the construction. So we would still capture it on on the books, but they're just gonna be taxed on it for five years. And it's intended to remove that consideration when you're calculating. Whether or not you wanna make a capital investment, or how far you wanna take that investment uh before it's going to trigger on something.
Yeah, this is for commercial properties. It can be. That's why I was gonna say, if, commercial property is gonna do this, why couldn't A?
So the process is that the, we wouldn't have, the planning board would have to start over and like do a re, do the investigation study. And then declare it in a, council then declare it in a rehabilitation. After that study, the criteria are a lot less um than redevelopment.
Who pays for those? Right, if you have to pay for this study?
We would have to pay for this study.
Like, you're only studying one building.
No, no, it's an area, right, we put the area into an area of rehabilitation. And then anyone within that area could qualify.
Oh, so you, even if one person comes forward and says, I wanna do something to my house, they check with all their neighbors?
No, no, you do, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. In order to create a program, we would have to direct the planning board to undertake a study. To declare an area in need of rehabilitation.
So you can say the whole downtown is an area in need of rehabilitation?
You could say the whole town is an area.
Okay, and then wait, any project will qualify.
Yes, but it's gotta meet the criteria and.
Is there a location that we're thinking of?
Is anybody, well, expressed any interest in this?
Typically, towns, when they thought their redevelopment plans and do their study. Also include language for rehabilitation within that, so that's why the mayor said I go to include it and I realized it wasn't included. Uh but every, every one that I've ever done, I've included both the same thing, because you might get the sort of one-off property. That wants to do something, um that's not part of something that qualifies for a big redevelopment pilot plan.
But this may be the fact that some commercial owners have said, or commercial can say, should say. That they are, aren't able to make current improvements on the property because they're in a redevelopment zone. Therefore, um this might alleviate that fact.
Well, I think just getting in the facts would alleviate that. But it would actually, it actually pull in the other direction, create an incentive.
Create an incentive for them to actually invest in that property. Is this something we can refer to land use? I mean, because in the sense that you have to like literally sort the whole process over, right? So there's considerations.
So we couldn't actually amend the old ordinance?
And you might be, so right now, the whole process only includes Quimby and Audi. So you might be able to extend this to other areas, but again, the criteria is a lot.
Yeah, I'm just thinking how big this investigation would be, if you're gonna do the whole town. I don't think we should be doing this. No, I mean, if you were to say the downtown quarter or two oh two and Clermont, so you would include all that. But you're saying the criteria isn't as strict, so the investigation wouldn't be as intense.
Correct. We can get estimates.
I'm just curious, well, you know, let's, let's look at it in land use and see how we wanna go forward. And and investigate it a little bit more, and maybe you can give us some background on what the criteria is. And we'll look at um what's really involved. It's just, you know, look like a good incentive for businesses to invest in their buildings.
I did have somebody mention someone like this to me that lives downtown. But not necessarily in the core, they live in the. We have to see, Alice, downtown Clermont.
Yeah.
And in the gateway. So the gateway part, like, which is after the downtown kind of ends. I think this is the gateway where we are. And that, um, it kind of makes sense, because that's what people are seeing when we come downtown. So to have the, you know, improvements to incentivize home and business owners to improve would be smart. And I think some of the public, last time, some of the last council meeting, there were public comments about. You know, I'll, I'll improve my property, just tell me what to do.
By the way, uh also like the notion of eminence of the land and everything like that, that doesn't come into play at all. And it's not even an option, it's not even forced, it's completely wrong.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, well, we'll send it to uh, let me do, put that on our agenda, and we'll do a little more research on it.
I have two I, new business?
New?
New.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the first one was, I was approached by the French cleaners, one of the French cleaners at the um corner of two oh two. And I guess that's Childs, they actually inquired with the borough about potentially having food trucks on the weekends. Both as sort of like incentive for their business, as well as sort of creating more of a destination for that neighborhood of which I live in. Um they, it was complicated because they um. The borough, I guess, you can't have an individual property do that, you need to change it from um. A borough standpoint, right, change of use from a borough standpoint. Um they could go through changing the actual use of their property through the planning board. Or they could maybe do it every so often from a bushel standpoint, but they were thinking about doing it like every weekend in the fall and the spring. So um I wanted to maybe have someone take a look at this, I don't know where that would fall into, or that might be land use. But.
Yeah.
There'd be land use as well, okay. Okay, so should we go to land use first? On it, I mean, unless people wanna.
But it's a permanent structure. It doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't matter, it's a use, uh, you can see two primary uses, basically.
Yeah, maybe, um, yeah, maybe we should reach out to Renee first and see what are.
They did reach out to Renee, they have a little information on it, if you wanna refer to land use, maybe we can get the owner to come and have Renee come and talk about it a little bit. They wanna do.
Yeah.
Does it make sense? Okay, second, um I had another small business owner in town, a tow truck operator, but Tom and Jack are aware of this. Inquire about, um, I guess, in our ordinance, there's regulations that require in their insurance policy. For towing, for lease towing, a five million, a article that requires five million dollar umbrella coverage. And they said that it's superfluous and obviously adds higher insurance coverage for them. They said other burrows have dropped this provision. And uh basically that is duplicative. Um specifically gave me the regulation, um three to five, that ten regulations for towing service operators section have. Um I said I would bring this up at council, take a look at it, it is a owner in town, a resident town, who owns best managed towing. So I was, I wanted to serve, refer this to public safety, maybe they're the best. Risk manager?
I'm, I'm just curious, if Tom has an opinion at this point?
Um, you know, I just know that when we wrote the ordinance, um, that. I understand that the towers were actually involved in crafting of the ordinance. And that was kind of common best practice when this started coming around. And then that the risk manager had recommended those limits back then, so it was like two thousand two.
Yeah, so it's twenty years ago.
We, we wrote the ordinance in the period, we're working with the council.
So we should, we should have the risk managers round and round on it, because, you know, these towers were doing it on our behalf. So any lapse in coverage or nonexistence in coverage, we're gonna fall back on our insurance. Right, Jack, Jack's right, the best thing is to go back and, since they recommended the initial limits, ask them their opinion on any changes.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure it's not superfluous coverage and that the ordinance isn't providing.
And this what refers to is when the police or public force or someone has to call, it's totally able to move something under our authority.
It's kind of weird, we even have to be involved, if you're aging during the state of general, in a little complicated system.
Okay, I go over to Tom on the rest, we generate the rest, thank you.
All right. And the other day business. Okay, then, I guess we're in a close session, are we coming out?
Not for me.
All right, well, thank you for being here, and sticking through the whole thing. Yeah, I know, you're easily up there, I was just seeing you in person. We get cookies when you come to our service.